Good evening and welcome to this Zoom webinar forum with the candidates for the 2024 to 2025 at-large Bainbridge Island City Council term. This is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitsap County. My name is Riley Abel and I will be the moderator for tonight's events. The League of Women Voters is proud to be a nonpartisan organization and does not support or oppose candidates or any political parties. The League envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Before we begin, the League would like to acknowledge that our homes and gathering places in present-day Kitsap County are within the ancestral territories of the Sequamish and Skalallum people, who have lived in harmony with the lands and waterways along Washington's central Salish Sea for thousands of years. Here, the Sequamish and the Skalallum live and protect the lands and water of their ancestors for future generations, as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855 and the Point No Point Treaty of 1855. The questions for today's forums were sourced from the community through the League of Women Voters website. The candidates will be asked questions that cover a range of topics and issues pertinent to Bainbridge Island. This evening, the candidates participating are Dick Haugen and incumbent Kirsten Hytopolis. Thank you both for offering your skills and talents in service to Bainbridge Island. You deserve our respect and each other's. With that in mind, please remember that this is a forum and not a debate. We ask you to respond specifically to the provided questions and remain civil to each other. The candidates have been informed of tonight's format, but I'd like to repeat it for the viewers. So for each question, each candidate will be given 60 seconds to respond. We will start in the order their name appears on the ballot. That means that Dick Haugen would go first, or Haugen, excuse me. We will start with, and then we are going to rotate who answers the question first with every question. So the first one will go to Mr. Haugen and the second one will go to Ms. Hytopolis. Please be conscious of the viewers and do not go over the 60 seconds. If you run out of time, you may finish your sentence. If you finish responding to a question before the 60 seconds are up, you are welcome to use your remaining time to address a previous question or to clarify a statement. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have 90 seconds to address a preview, or I'm sorry, will have 90 seconds to provide a closing statement. Our timekeeper, Betty Weiss, will keep everything honest using an electronic clock, which the candidates will be able to see on their screens. So let's get started. Remember, each candidate has 60 seconds to respond. And we're going to start with Mr. Haugen because his name appears first on the ballot. Mr. Haugen, what inspired you to run for a position as a city council member and what do you hope to achieve?
Well, for me, it started about 10 years ago. I ran for city council. I was active going to city council meetings on particular issues and people came forward and said, you know, you've got some good thoughts. Why don't you, why don't you run? So I did and got into the process then. I did not win that election. But ever since, I've kind of kept track of things, got to know the people on council, planning commission, those two main groups, and the people in city hall and so on. So this round, it actually was my wife who came forward and said, Dick, you're spending so much time on this. Why don't you, why don't you run for city council? It'd give you a platform. And I thought about it and said, okay, so I did.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Haugen. Ms. Hytopolis, same question to you.
Well, I always say, of course, one of the main reasons I've, I've always been a run every time I run for city council is because I love the island. But more and more, I've, I've run and I've run this time above all because as the issues have become more complex that are facing us, I think that experience is critical. As climate change and increasing growth pressures are facing the island and the policy and, and as an all-island city, those issues are particularly unique and challenging for us. It's critical that we have council members that have the specific, the direct experience, the knowledge of our code, our land use, our processes and so forth, to be able to help us face these issues facing us and deal with the increasing regional pressure and scrutiny as we deal with affordable housing challenge, again, growth pressures, climate change and so forth. So I want to step up and continue to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Hytopolis. This is a sort of a follow-up to that one. So Ms. Hytopolis, we'll start with you first. Would you describe your relevant previous experiences that have prepared you for the council role? What skills, training, resources, and expertise will you bring to the council?
Well, sure. So of course I have direct experience. This would be my third term. So I've served on council and through all sorts of different experiences with different council members facing different policy issues and challenges. When I first came onto the council, we were in the red financially and we turned the council, we turned our finances around so that we are a city with, with strong reserves and financially sound. I've dealt with all sorts of land use issues. I've dealt with different, again, council dynamics, so interpersonal issue, dynamics on council. But in addition to dealing, and I've dealt with many different public, public processes, code, code development, et cetera. But in addition to my direct experience on council, I also in my personal, in my personal professional life, I am a collaborative attorney and mediator. And that job involves helping people resolve conflict out of court and finding creative solutions where it seems like there is no solution. And so I bring those conflict resolution skills and problem solving skills as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Haugen, that's the same question to you. If you'd like me to repeat it, please don't hesitate to ask.
I think I've got it. Thanks. Yeah, the, the way I'm different, my points are different, I guess you would say, is my big business background. And my involvement with the city council, I don't know, has been 10 years of involvement with the council and the planning commission. Especially with council, what I think the biggest missing element is, is a good business sense of what's going on. It's not run like a business. Some decisions are made that could be better. And I have years, I have a career of running businesses, large businesses than what the city is in terms of budgets and employees. And I think that would be really helpful to bring to the party. Now, running a business when you have to feed employees and raise money, you have a different perspective on it than if you've never gone through that. So business experience and involvement with the council, I would say, are the two big attributes I have.
Thank you very much. All right. So then this next question will be for Mr. Haugen to start. How have you or how do you plan to interact with Bainbridge Island community members? What concerns or issues have you heard from those community members?
Well, a good question. My answer to that is something I started actually fairly recently. It, it's kind of centered what I'm doing. It's really hard to find out what the people want. And typically what happens, you talk to your friends, your colleagues, there's not a lot of outreach. So a few months ago, I started something called Survey Bainbridge, where I go out and I talk to, or through email, about 4,000 people and I get a broad perspective of what people are thinking, which is a good way to approach the problem. So I would continue doing the same thing on any particular topic, from, you know, what's going on at the head of Eagle Harbor to what to do about healthcare, affordable housing, the whole bit. I think there's a wealth of information that could come forward from talking to the people, listening to what they have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Haugen. And so that will be the same question to you now, Ms. Hytopolis.
And unfortunately, I missed the question. I lost the opportunity to prepare. What was the question again?
How have you or how do you plan to interact with Bainbridge Island community members? What concerns or issues have you heard from those community members?
Well, assuming me while I'm on council, and that's, that's a major part of the job, so I have a lot of experience with that. And so, in fact, that's, that's been more of our time interacting with the community, I think, than we do, certainly more than we do on the diets or with our colleagues. So, and returning emails and meeting individually with them and working through committees and, you know, in the public processes themselves, and I'm a very strong advocate for increasing the public processes that we have around our, in our, around our policy and code development. Right now, I'm on the steering committee for the comp plan and the Winslow Subarea Plan. It's, it's critical to me that we, that we bring the community in in every possible way. So I'm hoping I understand correctly that you don't mean during the campaign, which is almost over, but those are the ways that I would be interacting with the community. I'm always inviting the community, community members to contact me. It's a major part of the job.
Okay, thank you. You were understanding that correctly. All right. So this one now will go back to Ms. Hytopolis. What is your experience with diversity, equity, and inclusion? And how would you plan to promote or address diversity in the Bainbridge Island community as a council member?
Well, I don't pretend to have any special skills in that area. I, you know, I, I look to our race equity advisory committee to, to, to help us. I'm about to undergo. I've had some training in that area. We're about to undergo council members, along with members of the race equity advisory committee, breaking out into three different groups to do some training ourselves in the next few weeks. As far as in the community, in the community, I think that our focus in the city is, is to do what we can at the city and in the city. And so again, I look to the race equity advisory committee and our new equity officer to help us determine how we, in our policy development, and how we affect the community and our planning, et cetera. So for example, having a race equity lens on the planning work that we're doing, that's how we affect the community. So it's in our work as a city that we affect the community. So I think above all in planning and making sure that we're using a race equity lens in all of our planning and code development.
Thank you very much. Mr. Haugen, that's the same question to you.
Yeah, thank you. The, from my perspective, our diversity is pretty diverse. We're in pretty good shape. Look what's going on in the world. There are some terrible, terrible things happening. Even watching the news before we started this, this Zoom. And the, there, there's a lot, a lot going on, a lot of attention being, being spent on it. But I think we're actually in, in, in pretty good shape. I mean, the people get along. Our council is certainly diverse. Our island is diverse and I'm happy with the way that's going.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, then, so this one will be for Mr. Haugen to start off. In November of 2020, the Bainbridge City Council announced a climate action plan identifying climate change as one of its top priorities. What actions would you champion during your term to prepare the island for impacts from climate change?
Oh, boy. Well, where do I start? When you talk about things like sea level rise, which seems to be a, you know, particular topic, I don't know what you do to stop it. It is what it is. You talk to people on the sand spit, they know one of these days as things progress, they're going to go underwater and either can stay or they can move off. It's, it's, it's a tricky thing. All the other things about climate change, I mean, there's so many topics. If we could land on one and I could give you an opinion on it, but we're paying attention to it and pick them off one at a time.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Hytopolis, the same question.
Well, as a city, there's a number of things that we need to do. We need to make sure that we're preparing our infrastructure for, in particular, for sea level rise. So our roads, our sewer system. We need to be completing the groundwater management plan and understanding the sensitivity of our aquifers to climate change and, and doing what we can to conserve and make sure that we have adequate water, you know, with the projections that we use for growth and climate change. We need to, we were doing, we're doing a great job, I think, with emergency planning, but we need to do even more to prepare for, to prepare for wildfires and evacuation. So at, at the very least, in those fronts, we need to prepare for disaster preparedness, infrastructure, groundwater, so as individuals in the community and as the city with regards to our infrastructure for adaptation.
Thank you. All right. So this is a big question and very open-ended. This will go for Ms. Hytopolis first. What do you think is the biggest issue confronting the Bainbridge Island community during the next 10 years and how will you respond to it?
Well, it's, it's, above all, it's just a 10-year period because we've got some big stuff coming in the next few decades. It's affordable housing, really. It's, it's a combination of the fact that we don't have the housing for the people that we need to be working in our businesses. And it's causing us, it's causing school level, it's causing, you know, that's not to have the families that are coming into our schools and the lower grades, et cetera, that's starting to change the island. And it's not only whether, even if we as community members, if certain community members feel like, well, it doesn't affect me, the state cares. And so it's going to start to affect us in that the state is saying, if you don't resolve this, we're going to make you resolve it. So we have internal need and we have external pressure on us to resolve it. And so it's affecting us and we're going to resolve it one way or the other. So because the region is, is, is suffering from housing pressures.
Thank you. Mr. Haugen, that's the same question.
Yeah, thanks. I have a slightly different perspective on, on that. Part of it, opinion and part what I'm getting back from my surveys. I think preserving the character of Bainbridge Island is, is way up there on the list. People complain about things happening. And I would add that one of the things I'm really keen on, and it applies to the question preceding this, is prioritization. If we want to know what the top priority is, we listen to the people and figure out what their priorities are. Because, you know, I might have an opinion that might not be the same as the 80% of the island wants. And I would, I would, I would bow to what the majority of the people want. So you got to prioritize what's going on. Part of the issue I have with the comp plan and things that are going on there, we got lots of ideas and things are not prioritized. So.
Okay, thank you. Since we have gotten to the subject of affordable housing, I have a few questions that are related to that. So let's go with those. This one will start with Mr. Haugen. How should the city council define affordable housing on Bainbridge? And what ideas do you have to help the general public better understand what is meant by affordable housing?
Well, yeah, absolutely. The city and whatever the city means, whether that's a task force, work group, blue ribbon committee, HRB, it needs to be defined. I got into this six months ago, I guess, in detail. Went down to the HRB, tried to figure out what's going on. I looked at every affordable house unit that we have on Bainbridge to get a feel for what's happening, trying to get an idea for what the demand is. And I walked out of there, I said, I don't think we really know. If I don't know and I can't tell somebody specifically what we are looking for for affordable housing, it's, it's, it's not well, it's not well-defined. And the survey that I have done says the same thing. People don't know exactly what it is they're supposed to be doing, who we're doing it for, how much it's going to cost, who's going to manage it, and, and that sort of thing. It's a, it needs to be defined. Yes, absolutely positive.
Okay, same question to you, Ms. Hytopolis. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I understand. I understand. And I understand the community's frustration over the years and the failed affordable housing policy over the years. It's been very frustrating because in the name of affordable housing, there's been a lot of mistakes made where we've seen developers get bonuses that have not turned it into anything. And so, but I think that we've really getting a good handle on what affordable housing is. And the fact is, very few people can, people who make 120% of area median income can't afford to buy just about anything on Bainbridge Island. So that's a problem. So what we're, what we think we understand now is that developer bonuses don't work and that's not the way we're going to go. The way we're going to go is that the city is probably going to have to be the only entity that's ever going to build any housing for people who are the people who are working in our, our businesses, like our restaurants, for example. And so we won't have very much housing, but that type of the city will build it. And our nonprofits will probably build the housing for people who are more in the vicinity of just below area median income. And it's a very hard question to answer in one minute, so I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I'm going to give you another opportunity to keep talking about it. So, well, how about this question for you, Ms. Hytopolis? What policies would you like to see the city to implement to increase the inventory of affordable housing?
Oh, that, yeah, that's great. So as we're doing the Winslow Subarea Plan, we are being, we're being, here comes some state stuff that we're, we're dealing with. The state is actually telling us what type of affordable housing, very specifically, we need to plan for in a way they never have before. And in order to accomplish that, we're going to need to create some additional capacity for multifamily housing in Winslow. In doing that, we'll be choosing some parcels with the community's input as to where should we, what sections of Winslow should we create multi additional, I hate to use the word upzoning, but upzone. And when we do that, we will have the ability to require the owners of those, of those parcels to create affordable housing. That's called mandatory inclusionary zoning. And so for the first time, we would have on the island the ability without giving, you know, non-transparent bonuses that we're not sure what they'll generate. It will be, when you build, you will build, say, 15, 20% affordable housing, permanently affordable at X rate.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Haugen, the same question?
Would you repeat the question to make sure I give you?
No doubt. Yeah, of course. What policies would you like the city to implement to increase the inventory of affordable housing?
Right. Well, in terms of increasing the number of units, the governor has set out a mandate, I guess you'd say, we're supposed to have like 1,900 additional affordable units by, in, in 20 years. But again, it gets back to the definition, exactly what are we going to do, who are we going to do it for? We've got properties like Suzuki, good example. It's been up and down what we're going to do with it. Are we going to use city properties to do it? What kind are they? Are they, are they manufactured? Are they building up? There's a certain cost, a timeframe with designing and building. Do we want to do it in a hurry? So it's, I, back to the prioritization and, and, and definition of what it is we want to do. And I don't know how you can do it if it's not defined. So definition, prioritization.
Thank you. Since the Winslow Subarea Plan was brought up, I would like to start asking a couple of questions about that. So in August, the city council received a briefing on the draft for the Winslow Subarea Plan and was given three options. The first option was to do nothing. The second was to focus on dense centers with walkable corridors. And the third option was to distribute density by expansion of middle housing. What are your opinions on these three alternatives? And we're going to start with Mr. Haugen.
Well, again, you know, I, I sort of have opinions about this, but opinions turn in, this is what I'm going to do. I think it comes back to listen to the people. One of my very first point, listen to the people, prioritize, keep your eyes on the money are the three. Listen to the people. I'd like to know from more than just a few people, what the population wants to do about all this. And of the, of the three things you talked about, I don't know from the surveys I just did. It, it, how people respond may not necessarily be what you and your friends think. So first, I would do one of the surveys like we're talking about. Make it a sample that's big enough so it's statistically significant and make that the, make that the starting point.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hytopolis?
Yeah. That's interesting. I'm not sure if I, if I characterize the three, our three main options, we're talking about quite the same way. I, I thought that our main, our main, the main issue is do nothing, infill, I would describe it infill or, or expand, or expand out. I know that we're also talking about, you know, if we, whether we, when we're, when we're, where we place additional density is in two sort of different locations where there's sort of a walkable, we're sort of walking from with, you know, between the two. So I see those as different policy questions. To me, again, I actually would, I would, I think, agree that we want to hear from the community what we do. From the, as far as the policy point of expanding Winslow out versus staying, we definitely don't do nothing. I believe we focus on infill, whether the expanding outward. And I also believe that we, we listen to the community on where we put the density. And I think that we do not, you know, put the density all throughout Winslow.
Okay. So speaking of listening to the community, what specific things would you do, Ms. Hytopolis, as a city council member to help increase your constituents' understanding and engagement during the Winslow Subarea Plan approval process?
Well, one of the things that's really important to me that I've been experiencing for, for, I think, two and a half years and I'm still hoping that we're going to get is that, and so, and I believe the majority of council is on board with this as well, is that we need to see some visual manifestations of the density as we, as we get into this and not just simple block manifestations of this is what, you know, this sort of floor area ratio is. I mean, so in other words, if this community is starting to narrow down to, we think that we could feel comfortable with seeing some more density in this zone, what would it really look like to see X number of stories literally there? And so whether that means actually constructing some sort of, you know, putting a physical structure, I've heard before of putting, I don't know how to do this, but basically like, I won't say stick like on the property, but the height for them to look at, whether it is having somebody do a design for them to see what a building on that actual property would look like so they can experience that.
Understood. Thank you. And then same question to you, Mr. Haugen.
Yeah, I want to chime in here about the way the city has typically gone about things in the past. They're really good at checking off the box and putting work groups together. Now they're doing it now with the, with the planning commission. And the problem with that, if you have a better tool to do it, and I think we do, is the work groups turn out to be a pretty small, finite group thinking of what they, their opinion, what should be done. But it's not the whole population. I get back to, you'll hear me rattle this on multiple times. It's a central part of how I think, that we've got to find a, and we have a way to find a Broadway to listen to what the people want. And it's like anything else. You start with a big splash, you get, you put out a survey of 4,000 people, you get back 800 responses, you narrow that down, and then that sets a direction for how you're going to go about solving the question that you're asking.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this next one is tangentially related, but one of our league members submitted this question. And we're going to start with Mr. Haugen. What is your reaction to the sometime expressed public perception that the city planning or building departments are easier on developers of new homes than on individual residents who are adapting or modifying existing homes?
Wow, thanks a lot for that one. What I, what I hear over and over again is the frustration of people in general and builders dealing with the planning department and trying to get stuff done. They get, go, you go to the desk, you get two different answers from two different people. People are tearing their hair out to, to, to get things done. I think it's too long for the three, four seconds left, but some years ago, we hired a person from Port Orchard who promised that he could use his experience and get their permits and that sort of thing done in a week. While he was here for a couple of years and quit out of, quit out of frustration. So that whole process of putting all this together needs some work. I think we can do it. I think it's a management issue that, that could be fixed with the right people managing it.
Thank you. Ms. Hytopolis, same question to you.
Yeah. Well, I mean, maybe this is going to surprise anybody that I'm going to say this when I, when I am very supportive of city staff and I don't want to undermine anybody, but I think it's a perennial issue at the city of Bainbridge Island. Unfortunately, this caused a lot of frustration for the, the community over the years. We have a lot of problems with inconsistent code enforcement and, and, and long processing of permits and staff turnover and different, different opinions on different areas of code. And this is just a fact. And, and I think it's gotten better over the years. And I think there's still work to do. And to deny that wouldn't be fair to the community and it would, and, and, and I, so that's just a reality. There's work to be done.
Okay, I'm going to give you both another chance to say more about this because one of our league members shared a story about having to remove a tree from their property by order of the fire marshal. But regulations from the city manager's office made it difficult to comply with that order. And I don't want to go too much into the weeds with that anecdote. But could you please describe how you would facilitate communication and cooperation between different branches of the city's government? And we'll start with Ms. Hytopolis.
Well, it's good you're starting with me because I'm very familiar with the separation of powers and the city manager form of government. And it can be frustrating, but it's very important for someone coming into this position to understand there is no way you can change that. It's, and it is, it is one of the more frustrating parts of my job. And when I said earlier about the lot of what I do is communicating, you know, when we communicate with the community, a lot of it is things like returning emails and so forth. And I do a lot of fielding of frustrated frustrations from citizens who are dealing with a lack of code enforcement next to them or frustrated with dealing with processing permits and so forth. City council members have absolutely no Um, city council members have absolutely no power to contact staff and tell them what to do. Um, what we can do is we can, we can talk to the city manager about our frustrations. Our, 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 our power is to hire and fire the city manager. That is our power staff. We have an amazing city manager right now. I have been involved in the hiring of five city managers.
Thank you. Um, and then Mr. Haugen, that's the same question. I know that was a long one, if you'd like me to repeat it.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So um, I just, um, the tree. I just got an email from somebody I've never met. Um, again, responding to the survey. And uh, it's complicated because of the shoreline plan, but he had a dead tree. Um, he uh is in a dangerous area. I think it's about ready to fall in a house. I hadn't really seen it, but that's the picture. And uh, he went to city hall and tried to figure out how to do it across all the platforms. He had to hire an arborist for eight hundred bucks to come out there. Yep, the tree's dead. And then he, it took him a year, he still doesn't have it to get a permit for the darn thing. So how would you facilitate between the building? I don't sure who all the people who can start or stop this process. But if you go to the counter, it's not an over the thing where you talk to the day of herbs and say, hey, I need this permit this afternoon. It's complicated, frustrating, and ridiculous what people have to go through. And you think somebody uh in a management position could figure out how to get that done.
Thank you very much. All right, so Mr. Haugen, we're gonna start with you this time. Uh, when updating the city's comprehensive plan, how do you view the city's role and your role as a potential council member in promoting balance between building, housing, and preserving natural resources?
Can I have more than a minute?
Nope, you may not.
Well, the um, what, the the compliment is is something all by itself. It um, um, uh, if you, there is eight elements for the comp plan. If you look at water, which is drinking water, stormwater, that sort of thing, there are, I think, sixty-four policies on there uh that your people are trying to, and there's eight other, seven other elements that have the same sort of thing. Uh, the priorities are not clear of how you lay them out. And there are two very high priorities on that uh, on the water uh comp plan, one of which is in basically saying, we are gonna not let one drop of water go back into Puget Sound if we can avoid it. Well, that was ten years ago. It's a high priority. It's still not done. We've got a million dollar budget and round numbers to do it, but it's not getting done. Again, it's a management issue of figuring out how to run this thing more like a business than the way it's being run.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hightopolis, same question?
Yeah, well, could you, I mean, I very strongly, but would you repeat exactly how you said that, though?
Yeah, when updating the city's comprehensive plan, how do you video, I'm sorry, how do you view the city's role and your role as a potential council member in promoting balance between building, housing, and preserving natural resources?
Yeah, it's it's an interesting question because to me, I have no, in updating the comprehensive plan, which is actually, many people be involved in that, the council is just actually one part of that. Um, what's important to me is however we adapt to change, we will preserve the primary principles of the of the comprehensive plan, and that is where the direction will come. And the number one guiding principle of the comprehensive plan is to preserve the island's character. And and then another very important guiding principle is that we, that development must fit within the carrying capacity of the island. That must not change. And that is where, that is where the interface between development, building, everything comes in to intersect with the with the um, you know, with the funk, the natural function and the environment of the island. That goes back to what I was saying about the fact that we are an island city. We have limitations. We are an island in Puget Sound, and we have limited groundwater. And we have a very sensitive natural, again, natural functions. And so that is not gonna change, no matter how much change comes at us. And so we already have that direction in the comp plan.
Thank you. Um, well, since we're talking about water, and this will start with Ms. Hightopolis. Uh, city studies have shown recently that our water sources are resilient, but some of the streams are significantly polluted. What ideas do you have for improving the health of the island and the waters surrounding it?
That's got a lot of facts stated in it that I may or may not know know to be true. Um, can you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, well, so I, city studies have shown that the water sources are resilient, but some of the streams are polluted. So what ideas do you have for improving the health of the waters on the island and the surrounding area?
Okay, all, I I I, it is a, there's a, there are multiple policy and process issues there. There's, I mean, there's what, there's count, there's conservation, I mean, I don't know that our water, it, there, the statement that our water is, our water resources are resilient is a fact that we have absolutely established. We're not done with the groundwater management plan. And the management of our surface waters is complex because it relates in part to the groundwater, and it also relates to stormwater runoff, et cetera. So it's hard to answer that question. Um, I would say we need to complete the groundwater management plan. We need to continue to perform our functions in in stormwater management. Um, I, you know, I, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware that we're failing in those. So I guess I don't necessarily agree that we know how resilient our our resources are. And I'm not aware that we're failing in our, in our um, in our management of our surface waters at the moment, so.
Well, thank you for that response. Um, uh, Mr. Haugen, do you have anything to say on that subject?
Oh, absolutely. Um, and and before that, a leftover from the last question, I think an obvismen um would be really helpful for citizens if they had a problem. There's nowhere to go now. You're like talking to a brick wall. On your thing about uh uh water and polluted streams. Um, several years ago now, I took uh to several people in the city council, the idea along three oh five, setting up rain gardens as a high school project. Um, three oh five is the worst one. Break dust and the last sort of thing runs off into the fifty-some streams on the island. And this is one of the things, in terms of the environment, you could measure and monitor and do it almost for free. Get some high school kids come out there, let's measure what we have today, wherever it is. And a rain garden could be long, it could be, you know, mile long, I suppose. Sit down there, measure it, figure out what the plans go in there, uh, get it done, and then uh see what happens. And if the high school project number one works, uh, continue on down the road to the rest of it.
Thank you very much. All right, this is going to be our final question, and then we'll go to closing statements. So uh, in our neighboring King County, uh, the waste management has posed fees for individuals who put feed, food waste into garbage. What do you think that come, uh, that Bainbridge Island can do to keep commercial and residential food waste from going into a landfill? Um, and we'll start with Mr. Haugen.
Well, um, if in California, there are three bins. There's a green bin, a brown bin, and a, and a gray bin. And the green one is, guess what? It's it's for food compost and that sort of thing. Um, I thought about it, and uh, you know, different parts of the country have different solutions to this. It's something that uh uh, we could do, could experiment with it, and if it makes uh sense, have a um, a third can pickup that works in Cal. Hell, if it works in California, it could certainly work on Bainbridge Island. It's uh easy to, easy to copy and um, again, it's the type of thing you could, you could measure it, monitor it, see if this brilliant idea about a green bin would make any difference.
Thank you very much. And then the same question to Ms. Hightopolis.
Well, I absolutely believe that in the long run, we need to move towards mandatory um uh composting of of um uh, of food waste because it's a major contributor to climate change. It's part of our of our climate action plan. I mean, in the interim, we should be doing everything we can to encourage voluntary. Um, but in the long run, I think it's gonna need to be, and it's gonna be, it's gonna need to be part of the services on the island. And I think that we will eventually move to that. So absolutely supportive of that.
Thank you very much. Well, then that will bring us into uh our next phase, which is the ninety-second uh closing statement. And Ms. Hightopolis, since you were the last one to respond to that last question, we'll start with you, whenever you're ready.
Well, I um, I I I I was gonna start with something that I'm gonna try to get through this as ninety seconds, but about a week ago, we were asked to respond to questions for the Bainbridge Review, and um, I was disappointed because there were two lines that were cut out of my questions. And I, and I thought, you know, I think I'm gonna use those two lines to be my closing, part of my closing tonight, because they're really important to me, and I think they kind of capture a lot. And those were that we face unique challenges as an all-island city with our geographical isolation, limited resources, and fragile ecosystems. Policymaking on Bainbridge Island is complex and ever-evolving. And we've hit on that a lot today, but I, but the, but again, because we are an all-island city, all of everything from affordable housing to how we are affected by climate change, to how we accommodate growth, to how fragile our ecosystems are, are, as the fact that we're an all-island city. Because of that, we need really experienced council members who can work on stop finding creative solutions to our problems. Um, and people who have the temperament, the experience to work together and with our regional neighbors to address these problems, and frankly, to defend us against the increasing pressure coming from the state, um, the scrutiny, the legislation that's coming as we try to continue to 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 um protect the island's character and sense of place and stay within the carrying capacity of the island in the face of these um issues. And so this is why I feel that I wanted to run again, and I hope that the the community will keep me in place on the city council.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Haugen, your ninety seconds, whenever you're ready.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I have a um, a quick closing statement. Now, I'm not claiming to be smarter or nicer than my opponent. But I am claiming to have a totally different skill set that I developed over years of running businesses with more employees and bigger budgets than the city. I once again call attention to the police station project because an unnecessary financial decision was accepted and then not corrected when it should have been. When city council finally did get truthful information directly from me, they did not know how to fix it. Had they done so, which they could have, our city would have gotten money back. And we are talking about six million dollars plus. This would not have happened on my watch. I did my very best to correct it, but cannot do so without a seat on a council table. Surveys punctual and eighty percent dissatisfaction with cities' money management. That wasted money, could have bought sixty new affordable homes that we all love to talk about. The election is just not about me and my opinions. Our government needs at least three experienced business leaders who would produce better business decisions. Listen to the people, prioritize, manage the money, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and thank you both to Ms. Hightopolis and to Mr. Haugen for uh your time and for the voters who attended. Hopefully that this, hopefully this forum has given you the information required to choose your candidate. If you are a Bainbridge Island voter, you should receive your ballot for the November seventh general election on or near this Friday, the twentieth of October. You will have eighteen days to return the ballot, but uh, we, with the League of Women Voters, always encourage you to uh return it as soon as possible in case something comes up. Uh, you can return it by mail, and there are also ballot boxes listed on kitsapgov.com. If you uh would like to vote in person, then the closest in-person voting location is the Pulse Bow Fire Station, which will also be open for onsite registration from November fifth to seventh. That's the the Sunday to the Tuesday leading up to the election. So if you know any civic-minded procrastinators, please let them know that they will still be able to register to vote on the very day of the election. This league forum will, was recorded, and links to the videos will soon be on our website at l w v dash kitsap dot org. And it will be available on YouTube. BCAT, the Bremerton Kitsap Access Television Channel, may also broadcast the forums on Comcast Channel twelve and Wave Broad, uh broadband channel three. So please check your local listings for the upcoming schedule. And please encourage others to learn about the candidates by either viewing this forum, by reading, you mentioned the Kitsap Sun. Uh, there are so many different ways that you can learn about the uh people that you are electing. Please use those resources, encourage other people to use those resources. And especially, don't forget to vote. Candidates, you've got the Kitsap County's League of Women Voters. Thanks for participating in the forum this evening and for offering your expertise to Bainbridge Islands. So thank you to our audience and to the two of you and community members for participating in representative democracy by listening and providing thoughtful questions. So good night, and let me just say this one more time, don't forget to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank both of you so much.